Morning, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started with our Commissioner's Status Update Meeting. Today's date is June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. The time is ten a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Eberline Duncan and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. We'll go to our first business item, Justice Building Update. It's a discussion. David Mendez is not here today, so we have Director of Building and Grounds Jeff Fuller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. As I think we've noted, we are pretty nearing completion of the Justice Building. We have the temporary certificate of occupancy. The elevators have been signed off by the state, so they are fully operable. We've opened up the wall in between the two buildings now, and so we are using one of those elevators for the ADA access so that we can get people down to the lower level. And then Bowden has taken out the sidewalk that went down that we were using for that ADA access so that they can build the courtyard in that lower level in between the two buildings. So that's kind of the bulk of their work is, over the next couple of weeks, they'll be working on that kind of alleyway courtyard, and there'll be a gate in there, and that'll be all employee access into kind of both sides of that building. So that's mainly what they're wrapping up. The furniture is moving along. We took delivery of the first floor furniture. It's about seventy-five complete and installed, so you can see the desks and the layout of those buildings, and it looks really nice up there. They're also working on the kind of the temporary areas where the clerks will be sitting with the partition walls. So it's looking really good up there. We've got delivery coming for the lower level next Monday, and they'll be working on the AMP furniture. And then on the twenty-sixth, we'll take delivery for the furniture on levels one and level two. So they are moving along. They are scheduled to be done with furniture install on July ninth, and then we have scheduled our open house ribbon cutting on July tenth from three to six p.m. And there'll be more details to follow as we work on that. And then following that, on Monday the fourteenth is when we'll begin our department moves. Next week, I'll be bringing you a quote from a moving company to help assist that because it's way too much from moving those departments over that our team can handle. And so we'll be working with a company, we're proposing to work with a company called DeVries Moving Company that can help assist us, and they anticipate it'll be probably three days to get those departments moved over and get them set up in the new areas. So we're getting very close. We are doing our final punch walk with Bowden this afternoon in a couple of areas that we haven't addressed yet, and so that means we walk it with the architects and take a look for any just deficiencies or things that we need to touch up, clean up, and that kind of thing. And then Bowden follows up with completing those items that were identified on the punch list. We're also doing owner training where my team gets together with all the different mechanical contractors, plumbing contractors, door hardware, just to get trained on the building, on all the fire suppression systems so that we know where all the controls are, where the shut-offs are, how the systems work, so that, you know, in the event of something going down, we know where to go and how those things operate. And so over the next couple of weeks, we have a series of those training schedules so that we fully understand the mechanical systems of those buildings. So that's pretty much the update for that. Well, I guess there's a few budget items that we're still working on tracking as, you know, as we go through and do what they call TAB, which is test and balance like of the mechanical systems. There's a few recommendations that come out of that. For example, like, oh, it would, the system would function better now that we see how the airflow is going if we put an extra damper in here. So a few little things are coming up, I think, to improve the, you know, the airflow of the building and that kind of thing. So there'll be a few last remaining items that we'll be bringing to you with some change orders. And I think David mentioned last week, we're still very healthy in that change order budget with the contingencies. So, you know, we expect to have some balance left over in that at the completion of this project. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Just, can we get the final, I mean, obviously, you still have the remaining items that you talked about, but can we get a recent update, financial?
Of the budget? Yeah, David is working on that. Obviously, he's not here today. I know he's putting that together, so we will try to have that for you very quickly.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Well, thank you, Director Fuller. Next up, item two. This is a whistleblower process. It's a discussion item, and it has my name in it. You know, one of the things that I see the Board doing as a main function is not to run the county, but to ensure that the county is being run well. And we have various feedback loops for the Board of County Commissioners to know how well the county is running. And part of that, one of those feedback loops is through the employees themselves because they're actually on the ground, and they see these things. It's impossible for county commissioners and elected officials to see things at the ground level in every little nook and cranny. And so what I wanted to do is just kind of reinforce the fact that the employees play an important role inside the county as far as giving feedback to the elected officials, supervisors, as well as the Board of County Commissioners. And we have a policy. It's actually referred to as four thirteen whistleblower. And I just want to read the first couple of sentences here just to kind of reiterate what this is for. "The purpose of this policy is to prevent adverse actions taken against an employee who communicates the existence of any waste of public funds, property, or manpower, any violations of law, or who provides information in an investigation, court proceeding, or other form of inquiry." And so I thought it would be prudent that we just kind of discuss this. What exactly, you know, would be qualify for notifying a supervisor that would fall under this policy? What are the procedures in place and protections in place and so forth? And so I have Darren Murphy here from our Civil Division of the Prosecuting Attorney to just talk about that. And Darren, would you like to talk a little bit about that process? What's involved with bringing something up that fits the criteria as defined as I just read?
Yes. So this policy, I do recall when it was revised, it was with the input of the elected officials at that time. So there's some terms in here that go beyond the whistleblower statute, but they are good terms. It's a general notification that qualifies under the statute, a general notification to employees about the whistleblower act and their protections thereunder. So we encourage employees to report to their supervisor. It has to be somebody who has decision-making authority. So to their supervisor and above, not directly to the elected official, and there's a reason for that. The, if there's ever a dispute, and there are from times to times, a dispute with the elected official and a dispute over the activity. So we want to have the elected official to be impartial. But we do want any sort of whistleblower activity to be reported. And, I mean, it's defined in this, generally defined in this policy. But to answer your question, it's very broad. It's generally about waste of county resources, manpower, violation of rules, regulations, and laws, both local, state, and federal. But that's kind of hard to define. So what we ask is that employees go to their supervisor, and they don't have to do it in writing. Just do so generally, but it has to be to their supervisor about whatever issue in that category. And then we, and what I mean by we is HR and legal, we help the supervisor with that. And sometimes we meet with the employees. A lot of times, we do meet with the employees because they have a tough time articulating exactly what it is. We help kind of flesh out what they're complaining about. And candidly, from time to time, we do make mistakes. Most of the time, the overwhelming majority of the time, the county does not make mistakes. There's really not something that we're doing wrong. But from time to time, we make mistakes, and we correct those. But we want to do those in a timely manner. So we encourage, and the law does require, that you have to report it when the event happens or very soon thereafter. So the employee needs to report it right away to the supervisor. We want a funnel system. Go to HR, legal if you have to, but really, if you can start with HR. And the reason I say that, there are, this is the whistleblower statute that we're talking about, the policy. But there are, there's a common law whistleblower type of claim. There's various federal-related claims. There's retaliation, and we help flesh those out. And so do so as soon as possible, employee. Supervisor, you need to go to HR, and HR and legal will help navigate that, and we'll meet with the employee if necessary. And like I said, from time to time, it is necessary. And it's really important to do it from the board's side of this because these are extremely expensive claims. Most claims, state law claims are capped by the Tort Claims Act. This is one that is not. It's an exception to that. So, and there's been some recent significant six- and seven-figure verdicts or settlements, and when I say recent, five or past five or six years in this area. So, hey, they are significant. We do want them reported. They are sometimes difficult, like I said, to articulate and flesh out what they are, so let's utilize HR and legal to help do that, and then just do the right thing and help. Nobody here at the county wants to be doing anything wrong, and if we are, let's fix it. That's kind of it generally, Bruce?
And I'd like to just kind of emphasize, it's not about tattling or anything like that. This is about protecting the employee should they bring something to a supervisor's attention. And because as a county commissioner, if there is significant waste, and we're not talking about wasting a ream of paper. We're talking about, you know, maybe thousands of dollars of waste or, you know, something that adds up to thousands of dollars of waste that I think the Board of County Commissioners would be, you know, would want to know that because it all adds up when you have ten, twenty, thirty different areas where that's all happening.
So, yes, I agree. So the policy, it strongly encourages borderline mandates reporting that by employees. So as long as it's in good faith, and sometimes it's hard to flesh that term out. So what does good faith mean? Maybe the employee doesn't have enough information, and when we do get all of the information, it might look like it wasn't in good faith. But at the time, the information that the employee had, we're going to err on the side of caution, and we want that reported, and we're going to characterize it as good faith. Maybe some of the activities down the road may not be in good faith. But on the front end, we're going to encourage, and like I said, borderline mandate that employees report this type of activity to their supervisor up through to HR, and legal will get involved.
And what happens if their supervisor doesn't do anything with it? What should the employee do at that point?
So up through the chain, the policy describes go up the next level and always go to HR. And then if that doesn't work out legal, my preference is that we make HR the funnel for all of these for documentation and other reasons. So my preference is to go to HR. But yeah, go up through your chain. Stop before you get to the elected official. It's not a horrible thing if you go all the way to the elected official, but preference is not to do that. If you go up two levels and you're still not getting anything, go to HR.
Okay. And what about the protections for the employee? Because I think that's one of the issues, is that you could have an employee that's been with the county for ten years, as an example, say something, and then all of a sudden, they're getting written up for things that really have never been an issue before that. And so what protections are in place for the employee when they bring something to someone's attention?
So if we're just talking narrowly about the whistleblower statute, the stick from the state legislature is a significant one. We're outside of the Tort Claims Act as far as the cap on the damages. There are some caps on the damages. But as long as the employee acts in good faith, faith does so in a timely manner, there is a remedy for the employee in the form of a whistleblower claim that is significant. And none of us here want to go there. The Board doesn't, none of the elected officials, certainly HR and legal do not. So, hey, what is the remedy? We're going to, all of us are here to assist the supervisors and the employees to make sure that doesn't happen. So, Bruce, I'm kind of being Pollyanna here. The hope is that we don't have any of those liability claims, that we've got enough safety nets in place to catch those. Yeah, we've got HR and legal. We'll burst on this.
Are there things that the Board can do if they discover that an employee has brought something to a supervisor's attention, and it falls under this, you know, county waste of public funds, statutory issues or whatever, that could help protect that employee?
Right. So what the Board can do is go to HR and legal, and certainly go to that elected official, report what you know, and, hey, if you include HR and legal in it, the Board doesn't have the power to compel other elected officials to perform their statutory duties. But the Board certainly can help assist getting them the right resources to make the right decision on these.
And inquire, at least publicly, what's going on?
Yes.
Depending on the issue?
Yes. A lot of these, we try to keep confidential, but at some point...
Well, if it's a waste of funds or statutory, I mean, an HR issue is a different issue, but...
The Board needs to, yes, the Board needs to, the Board does have the power to address waste. So there is authority for the Board to address waste.
And I know you mentioned that documentation isn't required, but if it doesn't get addressed, does documentation help?
Oh, certainly. And like I said, HR will document it. We try to utilize HR's documentation rather than legal's. And we have a really good process to make sure that we don't miss stuff. But it does have to be reported. If HR doesn't hear about it, it's the tree that fell in the forest.
Yeah. Anything else you'd like to add?
You know, I can't think of anything other than, hey, we do make mistakes, like I said, from time to time. And we correct them when we can, and we do so in a timely manner. So most of the time, what I see with these, they're misunderstandings, maybe not all of the information, but some of the time, there are mistakes, and we just need to correct those.
And just one last question, and then is there a way that an employee can ask, is there someone they can ask to see if this even qualifies before trying to go up the chain and not make a big stink out of it?
So that's a good question and a fair question. The way we've got the policy, like I said before, it's borderline mandates going to your supervisor if you have concerns in those areas. But certainly, HR is a resource available to anyone, and confidentially so to the extent that they can. I mean, obviously, if it's, there's money missing and something like that, HR is going to have an obligation to report that. But yes, that's where I would start, and then certainly, HR and legal work together on these.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions up here?
Well, I've got a comment. What happens if HR or legal is a problem?
You mean like the fox guarding the hen house, in essence?
Because we're all human. We all make mistakes.
Darren, what do you think about that?
So if, so if I'm committing some sort of waste, so you tell my supervisor. If HR is committing waste, you tell that individual supervisor. If you're not getting the redress that you want, you go to the elected official. So that's how you utilize it. And then what do we do, Mark, from there? If we have something, it's built into the policy. If we have something that looks like some sort of conflict, then we, HR usually does so, but we would just farm it out to somebody else to look at it.
Because I know that there's been times past where there were people that shouldn't have been in there in my prior term, caused some troubles.
So, yeah, we would, typically, we would just utilize an outside attorney to address that.
I think that's the proper way to do it.
Yes, yeah.
Commissioner Duncan?
Well, just as one member of this Board, what I will say is that if there is an employee in this county government who finds something that falls under the purpose statement for this policy, four thirteen, that if it's legitimate, I will do everything I can in my power to protect that employee from any kind of retribution. I know that elected officials are not necessarily bound by this policy, and so sometimes it can create a different environment that supervisors are bound to. But I think it's important that we always identify any kind of public waste or if there's something happening that's in violation of statute. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much, Darren.
Okay, item, okay, item number three, fleet vehicle ordering. It's a discussion item, and I have Captain Smart.
Captain Smart, for the record. Commissioners, again, this is just a bringing forward with our fleet, as we have in the past, especially last year, discussion and see where the Board stands on the probability of starting to order the patrol cars that we're looking for earlier as opposed to later. Obviously, it's funding that we're talking about. We're talking about also savings. If we wait until October, we're talking about a potential five to ten percent increase on what those costs would be. The order window is open right now, and so us jumping in only gets us those cars sooner as opposed to also waiting and getting in line with everybody else who orders cars from around the nation. So we did it last year where we came before you and jumped in on it early. Those cars did come out in October. We ran into a separate issue with equipment being on back order that hopefully this year, we're switching to a different outfitter who's local, who also is certified to install the same equipment that PPI was doing. And so we would get with them in advance and try to ensure that that equipment is started at the same time so that it would line up better. And so that's just what we're, what we're asking you is, do you have interest in doing that again? Would you entertain us going about that? Or are you wanting to wait until the entire budget process is done and order in October?
Thoughts? Comments?
Well, I think we should get it in as early as possible because we could save us a whole bunch of money.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, as long as the Board is comfortable with the ten cars, then that's not a problem. And I imagine that we're saving quite a bit of money by using a local outfitter.
Well, we'll save the transport costs. You know, that was about five hundred per car. We didn't, there's no savings in terms of, they were drop shipping them straight from the factory, so there wasn't anything there. The local outfitter did come in. The, it's, it's like on the same platform, and so he didn't give us a huge discount by being local. There was a slight one. But the equipment is as equipment is. The prices don't change much from what he's getting from what PVI was getting, so.
Question. So it's local. So what does that mean? Does it mean in Spokane, or does it down in Boise, or?
Here in Post Falls.
Okay, so right here.
Yep, there's an outfitter here in Post Falls who has started to do those. They did our two Hayden cars that they're finishing up on. As soon as the radios arrive, that'll be the last portion of that. And so that was kind of a test run for us to see how those also came about and see what happened with those. They aren't as big as PVI, and so it's a little bit slower process for them because they just don't have the same staff. But again, they're right here. We can easily connect with them for any electrical issues or anything else that arises. Equipment-wise, we'll just run it back over to them and see what, you know, see what's what.
I think that's very prudent.
Yeah, you know, yeah. And there has been things in the past where we've, we've talked, well, local. Yes, we're trying to be in Kootenay County local, not, you know, there's outfits in Spokane and stuff that have been entertained in the past. You can call that local, but that's truly a different state, and so we've tried to stay here permanently now. So hopefully, we can make this work, and they can do a great job for us. And again, it's the smaller batches of cars. I think they'll be gold. If we were dropping in twenty, twenty-five for them, that'd be a problem in terms of timeframe. We would just have to know that they move slower. They just don't have the same amount of staff.
And additionally, we want people from Kootenay County working on that stuff, and that's jobs.
For that part, I haven't consulted where he gets his people from, but...
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm going to be a broken record on this, so I'm making the comment, and that's not necessarily as a prerequisite here, but it's something that I think at some point, every department in this county needs to start doing. And that is start illustrating, and not tell and sell, but show and sell. You know, you have a fleet of cars. You know, it'd be nice to see what the mileage is on those cars, which one you plan on replacing, so we can kind of see this stuff. Because, you know, it's a million dollars in cars, right? And we ask the taxpayers to pay for this for us. And so being able to show them, you know, where their money is going, you know, what kind of, you know, what vehicles are being replaced, which ones are coming in, how fast they're being used, you know, things like that, I think would be appropriate. And they do this in other places, and I'm going to talk about this, too. That we need to start getting into the world of showing what we need as opposed to just telling what we need. I don't disagree that we can save money by ordering new. I don't disagree that it makes sense that we should use a local shop that's here in the county. But we're starting to get into big enough numbers that we can actually do these things, and I think it would help give us a sense as to the urgency of this stuff. If you had cars that had a hundred twenty thousand miles, we need them yesterday. If you have cars that are at seventy thousand miles, you know, that's a different sense of urgency.
Well, these things, we're taking to the fleet management, and part of that was, yes, Will Clinkefus took them down and said, these are the vehicles that are, that are at a hundred thousand or approaching that by the time that we would get new ones in.
I don't disagree with that.
You know, we, if you would like to see that spreadsheet, we can certainly put that together. We have them in the past. We've put it out saying, these are the ones that are going to go away, and here's the ones that we're keeping.
I understand.
These ones here, we have outlined on these ones that there are six for sure that are going to be there. Are there four others that are probably under? Yes. But we've talked about two, about we have to get more on a cycle of about ten a year, or we're going to be in the same boat as we were a couple of years ago coming to you for twenty-five because they're all going to come to the same cycle.
No one's disputing that.
You know, if that was more of what you're looking for, we can certainly do that as well and hold off on those and wait.
That's not what I'm saying. What I said was that the citizens of this county deserve to be able to see where their money is going, that's all. And that the show and sell is different than the tell and sell. And so, you know, that's all I'm saying. I'm not suggesting that these, this isn't a warranted request. But I think it's time that we start looking at, you know, showing stuff so that we can show people, this is where your money is going. I mean, you know, this Board is tasked with the authority to raise people's taxes. Right? And so we want to be able to at least articulate, you know, where your money is going and, you know, so they can have a better sense as to what's going on. And being able to show people that really helps, and I know that just from my own personal experience from two years ago where we took the full three percent, and that money went to the deputy pay. And I was able to articulate that in a way through numbers and everything, and show people that they're actually saving money by paying people a wage, a competitive wage as opposed to this perpetual cycle of hiring, training, losing them. as opposed to this perpetual cycle of hiring, training, losing them, hiring, training, losing them. So that's all, just a comment.
From my prior experience as a commissioner, in my time, I think they're doing a wonderful job compared to what it was previously.
I did not make a comment about their job. Just talking about the ability to be able to show the taxpayers, you know, where this money is going and why it's being used today, that's all. So, and I plan on showing this board more information of what we could be getting so we can under, you know, we can show the community where their money's going. I mean, we.
Great.
Yeah, well. It's certainly open to whoever wants to do that. I don't have any other questions, so if no one else has any questions, thank you.
Yes, bring them, order.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item is an executive session, so I thought we would do public comment first.
Morning, Commissioners, Ron Hartman for the record. First, I want to say I 100% support what Bruce is requesting for show and tell. So there's more, it's transparency being key. I'm not, I'm sure we need those police cars, I'm sure the cycle's there. But when it's show and tell, it sure goes a long way. So I just want to say I really support what you're thinking on that. The other one to support the officers here on one, fact that I was at Ford for 32 years. July's changeover month to the new model year. So what these officers are telling you is you're going to have to get that order in soon or you're going to be buying next model year. Because the factories do changeover in July. That's all on that part. And on the other one, I don't really have any comment on the whistleblower part. But along those lines is another thing that I, we did again at Ford. Wasn't dealing with whistleblowing, but we called them skip level meetings. Where quarterly, you had breakfast with at least two layers of management above you. And it was basically discussions of what you might be satisfied with or what you were dissatisfied with, maybe with policy. No laws broken, nobody discriminated against, nothing like that. But it was trying to get your ideas or where you stand above what sometimes were called layers of clay, which was a term at Ford. Sometimes it might be in engineering design. For example, I can give you one where we, I had a design to do an integrated transfer case inside of the transmission on trucks. As part of that team. Our idea got killed. We felt it got killed because of personal relationships with the supplier we had at a much higher level in purchasing. Now, we didn't know about anything being whistleblown, but what we were trying to do for this was to say, hey, we've got this idea and we thought it should have gone through. Well, as you know, it didn't. We still got separate transfer cases or that bolt on the back of the transmission versus being integrated. But why I'm bringing this up with the advancement of AI, there could be a lot of employees that have a great idea on how to use AI and they can't get it advanced forward. That could be big cost savings. Now, obviously, you're not going to have designs like I'm talking about on drive lines. But I think there could be ideas that need to come forward a couple of layers up for the use of AI or something like that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll go into item four, which is an executive session, I'll take a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to item code 742061A. Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.